I'd like to call everybody to order and to open the meeting formally. I'd like to remind everybody that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, the meeting will be livestreamed. The prayer of council will be read by Father Anthony Morgan from St George and Prince Tadros Coptic Orthodox Church, if you all could be upstanding.
Good evening to the mayor, councillors, council staff and members of the public. We'll start off with the acknowledgement of the country. Before we begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabragow clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with the good government in Liverpool. We pray. Almighty God, thank you for our life, our health, and the opportunity to serve within the local government of Liverpool. Send your spirit to touch the hearts of our leaders. Endow the spirit of wisdom on our mayor, councillors and all the staff that serve at Liverpool City Council with the familiar words, "The Lord bless you and keep you; the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you; the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace." Accept the great goodness that our council strives for and its decisions it makes for greater goodness of the city of Liverpool. Inspire our leaders to increase their prosperity of which whom they represent. Grant each member talents by which they multiply their fruits. May we please you, our God, this day and here as Almighty God. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please stay upstanding for the National Anthem. No singing. Australians, all let us rejoice, for we are one and free. With golden soil and wealth for toll, our home is good by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every state advance Australia fair. In joyful strains that let us sing, advance Australia fair. Beneath the radiant southern cross, we'll toll with hearts and hands. To make this come, the wealth of us reigned out of all the lands. For those who've come across the seas, we've found us plains to share. With courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains that let us sing, advance Australia fair. Thank you. All be seated. Thank you. We don't have any apologies. I see we have everybody here. But we do have a condolence. Tonight, we pause to honour the memory of the Secretary of the Liverpool City Netball Association, Estelle Lawler. Estelle was born in 1941 and lived in Larnier. She was a mother, grandmother and friends to many. Affectionately known by many names, Mrs Lawler, Estella, Artie S or Mama S. She was involved with the Liverpool City Netball Association for 47 years, including 20 years as the secretary. Mrs Lawler joined the City Netball Association when enrolling her seven-year-old daughter and watching her play. She subsequently took up umpiring and coaching before eventually playing netball herself. Mrs Lawler also worked closely with the Liverpool City Council staff for several years to help with the growing, the continuing growth of the sport in our local government area. In their tribute, the Liverpool City Netball Association praised Mrs Lawler and said her contribution and tenacity to ensure the success of the Liverpool City Netball can be seen every Saturday around the courts when we're all participating in the sport she loves so dearly. She was further recommended by the association as a strong, widely outspoken, funny woman who was compassionate and fiercely protective of all the people who she called a friend. During netball games on May 21, players paused to pay their respects to Mrs Lawler. On May 22, players and spectators participated in a loud cheer to celebrate her lifetime of service to netball. In 2018, Estelle Lawler was recognised with a nomination for the Service to Sport Award as part of the new Liverpool Local Sports Star competition. A funeral service to celebrate her life will be held on Friday, the 28th of May at 11:30 at Forest Lawn Memorial Park's South Chapel at Levington. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, seating inside the chapel will be restricted to immediate family. However, there will also be TV screens and speakers on the lawn outside the chapel, and the service will also be livestreamed. On behalf of the Liverpool City Council, I express my deepest condolences to Mrs Lawler's children, grandchildren and extended family and friends during this very difficult time. Estelle Lawler's contribution to netball and the wider community was immense, and she will be greatly missed. May she rest in peace. I recommend that the council writes to the family of Mrs Lawler to express our condolences for their loss. I move that way. Thank you. Seconded in many places. If we could now stand for a minute's silence. Thank you. Please be seated. First item on the agenda is confirmation minutes. Moved by councillor Depp.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by councillor Shelton. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Declarations of interest? None? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is representations from the community. Mr Tony Walter will address council on EGR06. It's Walter. The agenda is on page 63. The recommendations on page 63, councillors?
I'll move that way, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Caliander. Seconded councillor Rhodes. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 69.
I'll move.
The host's moving. Thank you councillor Ayad. Yes, councillor Hall. You want to say something? You're seconding, okay.
Madam, I've got a question, Madam Mayor.
Hold on, we've got councillor Ayad moving and councillor Hall seconding. Yes, what is your question, councillor?
Madam Mayor, I'm very happy with this motion. As a matter of fact, it was something that I suggested when I went out and inspected the premises out there, and I'm really grateful that council is going ahead with it. And it is something very much needed out in that particular, for that facility, because it gives the dogs, they had a couple of enclosures, but certainly not large enough. In some cases, the dogs can't jump onto their back legs, and a larger facility, of course, is going to allow them to not only socialise with their other dogs, all good things to make those dogs perhaps more re-homeable. So I really do think-
Can I ask what your question was?
Yep, my question is, is other councillors, other councils, because we know that this is a shared facility between other LGAs, are they going to use this facility as well?
I'll ask the CEO.
Mr Smith. Thank you councillor, and through the CEO, no, this will be used for Liverpool City animals.
Only. Madam Mayor, all I can do is thank the council very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 74.
I move that we note the report.
Note the report?
Yep.
Seconder? Councillor, hold on a moment.
Can I have an explanation of that, please?
Wait a moment. The mover has moved that it be noted, and it has a seconder with councillor Hall. Now, sorry, what were you saying councillor?
By receiving the thing, we're not supporting it being moved to a standard, because I would have to speak against that, Madam Mayor, because I think that is raising issues for council, and it needs to be resolved.
Well councillor, you're going into debate now, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes councillor?
May I please have the opportunity of putting forward a foreshadowed?
Yes, certainly. Councillor, do you wish to speak your motion?
Yep. All for reducing red tape where appropriate. If a policy doesn't need to be a policy, it can be a standard, all for it. Makes for more efficient governance, which we're all after. In this particular instance, I don't think it should be. I think it needs to stay as a policy and have some oversight with council and councillors, at least for the time being.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak against that?
Madam Mayor, I just have one comment to make, if that's okay.
Yes, certainly.
Earlier today, I spoke to the relevant manager in regards to this, and it's come to my attention that this policy is actually lacking efficiency and it's extremely outdated. So I was wondering if councillor Hagerty would take on board what's in the book, the recommendation that is in the book, and then maybe somehow add a number three where we can achieve what his objective is, because it is quite outdated.
Okay, before we go any further, my understanding is that we're just noting the report, is that right?
Yes, but I think what councillor Ayad is suggesting is that there is some updates to the standard that aren't in the policy, and that we effectively take on those updates and incorporate them into the policy.
Down the track.
Maybe notes and receives the report, brings back an updated policy incorporating the updates that were in the standard, and brings it to next month's meeting.
So taking on board councillor Ayad's concerns.
Madam Mayor, if I may, so basically, the policy, it should be a standard, but I'm happy to support councillor Hagerty if he wants it in a policy, but the policy has to be in line with the current standards, and at the moment, it's not.
I think that's, I think you're both on the same page, to be honest.
Madam Mayor, can I ask questions?
Yes, certainly. Ask a question.
Madam Mayor, through the chair, can council explain the difference between a standard and a policy?
I'll ask the CEO for the appropriate staff member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr Smith.
Thank you, through the CEO. A policy is ultimately a matter for council to determine standards, operational matters that staff follow consistently. So in relation to this matter, it was previously a council policy, but given it's an operational standard that development engineering staff follow, under the adopted standards policy already adopted by council, it's been converted into a standard.
So a follow-up question then, Madam Mayor, is that once we change policies into standards, if councillors then find something that they are not happy with in the standard, how do they go about getting that changed?
Councillor, you've, any councillor always has the ability, and I would encourage you to speak to me directly, if there are any concerns.
I can't hear.
The CEO has explained that you are always at liberty to speak to him about any changes.
What, so therefore, it is not like a policy which councillors can raise in a council meeting and vote on democratically. So we lose our democratic privilege as councillors by changing policies into standards. Would you agree with that statement?
I think, excuse me, I think that's an unfair question to be asking at this point of time. You have another report in front of you. I think you need to take that discussion offline after the meeting and take that up with the CEO.
No, that's just the point, Madam Mayor.
That is your discussion and your debate. You are not in a position to be asking staff those sort of questions, councillor, without them being aware of it prior to the meeting, and you haven't done that.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you have the motion before you, as councillor Hagerty has put, it's been seconded.
I am totally supportive of this motion.
And councillor Ayad has asked, councillor?
Well, I'm talking to the motion, Madam Mayor.
I haven't asked you to yet, thank you. You wish to speak against it, is this what you're trying to, you want to speak for the motion, well then you may go ahead, before our closed debate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm totally supportive of this. If it stops, the gradual deterioration of councillors' effective management of council, and I believe that-
Point of order.
Excuse me councillor, you need to retract "effective" from your dialogue. That's insulting.
Madam Mayor, if it means that councillors cannot alter a standard, I am in total favour of that we remain with policies.
Thank you.
I don't think that it's saving any red tape, but it does allow councillors the opportunity to revise past decisions and changing circumstances, which we do not get that opportunity in a standard. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There was a point of order called, and I'm sorry.
Oh, you got it.
I thought it was the same one. That's why I didn't call it. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other speakers?
Madam Mayor, can I just add that I believe that number one in the book needs to remain there, but rather than the word revoke, we put the word update.
Mm-hmm. How does the mover of the motion feel about that?
Same difference.
Yep, okay. He's happy with that wording, councillor? Right, so I think we're all on the same page with what you are voting for. Is there any other speakers? Do you wish your right of reply, councillor Hagerty?
No, all good.
All right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 77.
I'm happy to move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ayad.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Is there any opposition? This is for the typist, any opposition, because I'll say it's unanimous. It's unanimous, thank you. Carried. Next item's on page 83.
I'll move that way.
Thank you councillor Hagerty.
I'll second it, Madam.
Thank, I've got two quiet voices on my left here. Councillor Ayad, deputy mayor, any opposition? Again for the typist, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous. Next item's on page 95.
I'm happy to move.
Thank you, moved councillor Ayad. Is there any opposition? Again for the typist, I declare it unanimous. Next item on page 103. I can turn the page.
Madam-
I'm happy to move that.
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, and seconded councillor Ayad. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried unanimous for the typist. And the next item's on page 111.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move this and add a number three, if possible.
Right, what is your motion?
So one and two, as it reads in the agenda, number three would be direct the CEO to provide a further report to council on the opportunity to include dual occupancy with a development consent in R2 and R3 zones.
I'd be seconded.
Councillor Ayad's seconding.
And that the report be brought back in July.
Question?
Yes councillor Hagerty?
Don't we allow that already?
I will ask the CEO to clarify that for you.
And I will ask Mr Smith.
Thank you councillor, and through the CEO, in the LEP, we don't allow dual occupancies in the R2 or R3 zone. Under the Growth Centre SEPP in Austral, we do allow dual occupancies in the R2 zone.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes councillor?
What would be the impact of that on, sorry, on local amenities, traffic, that kind of thing?
Mr Smith?
Thank you councillor, through the CEO, the intention of that report will be to identify the pros and cons of doing so, including what additional planning controls we may need to put in if councillors were minded to do a planning proposal to amend the LEP to permit that. So we will go through that detail. We call that an issues and options report, so further information packed.
And I have a further question. With regards to point one, are there any current applications that are in the pipeline of boarding houses within R2 zones?
Mr Smith?
Thank you councillor, through the CEO, not that we're aware of, no, but we can confirm that, take that question on notice, but I'm seeing the DA manager, there was one recently, but none currently, but we'll confirm.
Yeah, councillor Rhodes, you have a question?
No, Madam Mayor, I thought I seconded it, but I see-
No, no, your mic, thank you.
I have a question, Madam.
Yes councillor Hall?
Probably directed to David. The dual occupancy, what are the negative effects of dual occupancy in an R2 zone?
I'll ask the CEO to ask, obviously probably Mr Smith, but-
Mr Smith.
Thank you, through the CEO. Councillor, could you just repeat the first part of that question, please?
He's asking, what are the actual ramifications of dual occupancy in an R2 zone?
Thank you for that clarification. Well, we currently don't permit them, so what this report will be providing is, what are the opportunities, what are the impacts, what are the issues that council should consider if it wanted to amend the LEP to include dual occupancies? Currently, our planning controls are subdivision standards in the R2 zone, down to 300 square metres. Other councils, for instance, do allow dual occupancies, but then they have a subdivision lot size, or minimum lot size for dual occupancies, about 500 to 600 square metres. The reason we haven't had dual occupancies previously is because we've allowed subdivision down to 300. So if you had a 600 square metre lot, you could subdivide it and have two dwellings and torrents title it. But what we can do through this report is look into all the pros and cons of doing so, so that council has that report in July to make a decision whether they'd like to progress a planning proposal.
Councillor Hagerty, you have a question?
Did we, did we take that out in 2008?
Mr Smith?
Thank you councillor, through the CEO. I don't believe so, but we can go back to 2008 and have a look. I'm not sure if it was in there under the previous LEP 1997, but I'll take that on notice and we'll see what was the controls back in 1997. We could actually probably address it in this report back to council if council's minded to support this motion.
Okay, councillor Rhodes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wonder then, after hearing Mr Smith's report back to council on that, I wonder if we need to, after opportunity, add in there on council, the opportunity and the pros and cons? Or can we get the pros and cons into that number three motion?
Well, I think that that is probably very clear. It says direct the CEO to provide a further report to council, the opportunity to include-
That's the opportunity.
That would obviously have the downside too, I would imagine, but-
So if we have the pros and cons, I'd be happy with it.
Yeah, okay, well I'll ask the mover if she's happy, you're the seconder. Yes, she's happy with that, so that's fine.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Can I just say a few words?
Certainly, you can speak your own motion.
So the reason that I wanted to include this today was because in Austral, in R2 zones, dual occupancy is permissible, and in R3 zones, it's not. Now, the reason it's not permissible in R3 zones in the Growth Centre is because the state government actually wants to meet the demands of the growth that's happening out there, so they don't want dual occupancy in R3 zones, they prefer to have the townhouses, just so we have more housing to house more people with the growth that's happening out there. Now, initially, I just wanted to put forward the R3, but then on advice of the relevant director, the advice given was that maybe we should include R2, so when it does come before council, we can actually make an informed decision. I myself am not always clear about the zoning. I don't know if anyone else is extremely clear on the zoning, and I find myself always calling the directors to find out what's permissible in this zone, why can't we do this in this zone. And across Liverpool, it's quite different, because the state is looking after the Growth Centre, and then Liverpool Council is looking after the rest of the LGA. So I think it's very important to have some kind of pattern, if you like, across the board. So what's acceptable in Austral is acceptable throughout the rest of the LGA, a standard, if you like, a standard. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor. Any other speakers? Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against. No opposition, I declare it unanimous for the typist. Next item's on page 116.
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Seconded it, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, who moved that? Thank you councillor Ayad. It's seconded by councillor Rhodes. Any opposition?
Question?
Yes, certainly.
The road that's being named Wilmington Road, the person Wilmington, who is, on what basis was it named Wilmington Road? Because I imagine it's after the people in the area, and there are quite a few Wilmington's, and I would have thought that the names, the geographical names board suggests that it can't be a person who's living at the moment. So could we clarify who this was in fact named after?
Mr Smith has answered.
Councillor, I would refer you to page 118, where it says that the nomination of the name Wilmington Road is in remembrance of Artie Wilmington, who recently died, and as a Wilmington family has resided in London since late 1800s. But I'll ask Mr Smith for the technical detail on that one.
Thank you, through the CEO, that was exactly what I was going to say on page 118. There is that information, and this report ultimately recommends that those names go on public exhibitions, so we can understand the community's views. However, as stated on 117 of the report, Transport for New South Wales has done significant community consultation, including emails over 1,300 addresses on Transport's database, and a Facebook post which has reached over 50,000 subscribers, but as the roads authority, council will undertake its own exhibition on these names if council supports it, and will progress from there.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just to clarify that, I knew that it was, and I'm concerned that the person who it should be named after is Artie. He's the person who died not so long, and he's very well-known in the area for all the efforts that he's done towards cancer donations and so on, rather than some of the others. So in our paperwork, whatever we do, could we ensure that Artie is the person named as the one that the road is named after? I know it's going to be called Wilmington Road, but I think the background should be that Artie is the person and not the current people living there.
I think councillor Hall, with respect, that's what's there on page 118, they're making sure it is after Artie. No worries. Okay, any opposition? Yes councillor Hagerty?
In favour, just a question, I think Transport for New South Wales went out today and actually covered the signs up, and someone queried it and they said, "We're waiting for it to get approved." Will they now go out there tomorrow and take them off, or are we going to have to wait for it to go through geographic names?
Mr Smith?
Thank you, through the CEO, I wasn't aware that they'd already manufactured the signs, but no, there's a process that we have to go through, so council has to endorse those names, then we, it's already had pre-approval from GMB, put it on exhibition. If there's no objections through that process, GMB will then gazette that name, and then the name is formally renamed.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 121.
I'll move that way, Madam Mayor.
Goodness!
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so that was loudly moved. I imagine that was councillor Rhodes. Okay, so that was loudly moved. I imagine that was Councillor Rhodes and seconded by Councillor Ayad. Councillor Rhodes, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as has been well presented through this council by many people, including many of my fellow councillors. We do have a problem with cats, and this policy, we're doing as much as possible. We still need to do further advocacy on certain aspects to try and get other LGAs to join in, so that we're all on the same page, because one council can't do this alone. But certainly, de-sexing programmes with reduced prices and for free, if ever we can, that is certainly going to help. And we live for the day, Madam Mayor, that we can change the legislation so that cats are not free to roam.
No roaming.
So that we can really do something about it. So happy with this, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers on cats?
Just a question, Mayor. Have we considered capturing the cats and sending them out to the farms?
I'm actually being serious.
I know you're being serious, but I will ask one of the council staff to answer that, because it might be more appropriate.
A little mask, Maud. Mr Smith.
You've got the cat question.
Got the hospital pass with that one. Through the CEO, councillor, there is very limited opportunities for council to seize cats under the Companion Animals Act. It's limited to, I believe, two areas if they enter food preparation areas, and if they enter enclosed lands or a wildlife protection area. So one of the issues that we've been dealing with Office of Local Government on, and the council has been very clear on through numerous resolutions, is amendments to the Companion Animals Act that requires cats to be under effective control like they are for dogs, whether kept inside or in an outdoor enclosure. So simple answer to your question, yeah, our ability to trap cats, seize cats, is very limited under the act.
Thank you. Yes, Councillor Hagerty.
I'd just like to speak in favour of this plan. While it's not perfect, I think it's a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Okey dokey. All right, any opposition? No more puns. Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried. Next items on page 123.
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Seconded. Moved by Councillor Sheldon, seconded by Councillor Ayad. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried. Next items on page 128.
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Moved by Councillor Didd, seconded by Councillor Rhodes. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried. Can I ask councillors if they're not speaking to turn their mics off, please? Next item's on page 133.
Move that way.
Thank you, Councillor Hagerty.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Seconded, Councillor Caliander.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Any question, councillor?
Yes, this was a question from a constituent on page 167. We talk about Class C securities are likely to default. The constituent has asked for an explanation. Oh, sorry, wrong one.
Okay, wrong one, thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried. Next item's on page 166. Thank you, Councillor Sheldon, seconded by Councillor Didd. Any opposition?
I have the question, this was the question.
This is your question now, is it, councillor?
That's right, Madam Mayor, thank you.
No worries.
From a constituent, page 167, there is mention that Class C securities are likely to default, and the constituent would like an explanation of that, if that's possible.
Through the CEO?
Mr Nandan. Through the CEO, these are grandfathered investments that we have, and it has a very long maturity time, going up to 2050, I believe. And there is a likelihood, so our investment adviser has actually assessed this, and he said there is a risk. Why there is a risk, I have to take that on notice and come back to you. That's okay.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councillor Hagerty.
Do we know how old they are? Do those securities? Is it a sort of pre-GFC thing, or?
They are pre-GFC.
Okay, yep.
Thank you. Any speakers against? Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried. The next item is committee reports.
Can I move them as a whole, Madam Mayor?
Councillor Didd's moving them as a whole. Seconded, Councillor Ballute. Yes, Councillor Caliander, did you want to say something? No?
I just asked to move them as a whole, which is already done, so fine.
Sorry, weren't quick enough. I'll put it, those in favour, those against.
Madam Mayor, I have a question on one of them.
Well, the items have just gone through. Which one is it, councillor?
Well, I wasn't quick enough, was I?
No.
It is the Tourism and CBD Committee.
Right.
Where it was voted that we continue to, no, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I can't remember what it was.
All right, thank you. You can always ask after the meeting, councillor. The next item is questions with notice, and the first item is in the name of Councillor Hagerty. He may need to talk to Councillor Chitty. On page 203.
We might have a self-resolving problem here. We have cats and mice, and there we go. Now, look, in all seriousness, we obviously are aware that there is a mice plague in some of the rural areas, and I did see some posts on Facebook, particularly around Ludham in regards to mice, and I just wanted to know whether we had had any complaints about it, and if we actually have a plan in place, should there be an issue. There has been some sensationalist reporting about mice forming a pincer movement around the Sydney Basin, but I guess, I guess my request here is that we keep it on a watching brief, and that we sort of aren't, okay, I'll drop the puns, but we aren't called sort of red-handed, and we're, you know, yeah, thank you.
Do you require a response to that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next item's on page 204 in your name. Councillor Hagerty.
Yeah, thank you for the response. I guess, not happy with Transport for New South Wales is my general mood on this one. I'll move a motion, how's that?
Okay.
That council promote the online feedback form through its social media channels encouraging residents to give feedback on the 30-kilometre zone.
Okay, second up?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Caliander. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, yes.
My difficulty with this is that when we have a 30-kilometre speed limit in one area, and at other schools it's 40 kilometres, and it's very confusing to motorists, I must admit, that, so what I think, whatever is determined should be around the board, like we shouldn't have different places with different speed limits, and I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Yes, councillor.
I just have a comment to make. I agree with the sentiment of this, but I have to agree with councillor Rhodes's comments that it needs to be a standard, and everyone knows that the standard speed is 40 k's. And I do believe that it will cause a lot of confusion, but I do appreciate the sentiment 100%.
Thank you. Any other speakers? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried. Next item is in councillor Rhodes's name on page 206.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and I thank the CEO for his comments, and I am particularly impressed with the latest workshops that we've been doing, and the terminology that is being used in that. The reason why this had to go up was because there were confusions by the constituents where they didn't know what they were buying into. And so I'm thankful for that this has gone up, so it does help to explain to the people exactly what happens when you purchase one of these properties. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Next item's on page 208 in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, staff, very informative.
Thank you. Councillor Caliander, you are on page 209.
I will wait for the responses to come back. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item's on page 210, councillor Caliander again.
Ditto.
And councillor Hagerty's page 211.
Yeah, happy to wait for that one to come back.
Page 212, again, councillor Hagerty.
Again, yeah, happy for that to come back.
And councillor Ayad's on question 09 on page 213, that's coming back as well.
Yep.
And councillor Ayad's again on page 214, and that's coming back. And then council on page 215, question 11, again in councillor Ayad's name, that's coming back. And page 216, councillor Ayad, that's coming back. So that's all coming back. Thank you. The next item is in your addendum document, the big purple one, and that is the Corp 03.
I have an amendment to that, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor. Hall, what is your amendment?
Well, in the recommendations, part one, I'd like that split into two sections, and one section, as one section has used, and the second section, I'd like to add that council includes a table that indicates each councillor's attendance at all council meetings, briefing sessions, and committees for this term of council.
Okay, and where would you like that placed on the index?
I would say split the first section, that council places the draft delivery programme, et cetera, place it underneath that as a second component of that.
Under your council?
Oh, sorry, yes, under your council.
Okay, so a third heading, if you like.
Yes.
Councillor attendance, or something like that.
Yes, council roles and responsibilities.
I just have a question. I don't have a problem. I think everybody understands your motion. I just asked the CEO how much of delay, what is the timeframe on this document? Just dawned on me, there might be a timeframe with this document, so, George?
It would certainly be very challenging to incorporate that.
Okay.
Given the consultation process that's required.
Question, Mayor, that doesn't need to be advertised, does it? It's just an add-on, so it can just be presented as part of the.
I'll just ask.
Sorry.
Can that information just be inserted as an extra heading after it comes back from, yep, okay.
It'd be fact of information.
Right. We've got a second up?
Second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Is there any opposition?
Couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Chitty, go ahead.
In relation from 36 onwards, it's got all the strategies and when we're going to deliver them and what we're going to do. Now, that's something that comes through every year. When do we get a report that actually says if we have or haven't achieved those?
I'll ask the CEO.
Those reports are submitted twice a year. The last one was submitted in December 2020, and it indicated that despite COVID, 99% of the objectives were on target.
Okay, thank you for that. In relation to the powerhouse, part of our comms team that sits in council, is there something in there that says, okay, we are promoting our powerhouse through our current comms team? Like, how much does our comms team actually do that sits in Moor Street for the actual powerhouse to promote Dine and Discover, to donate the theatres, to promote all those sort of activities that actually happen there? Do they get support from Moor Street for the powerhouse?
The council, there's very close coordination between the various teams in terms of how we promote that. We're trying to get better at it, but it allows Mrs Bono to give the detail.
Thank you. Through the CEO, yes, that's correct. But in addition, we are looking at improvements in that process through the review of the powerhouse, and already we can take on board, for example, this week you'll see multiple posts around the Dine and Discover, which will be on our posts for the LCC page, and we are looking at doing further collaboration with our larger comms team.
So just on the Dine and Discover, I think it was a resolution from council to promote that on council's web or on social media platforms, is that being done?
I believe so, because, and if I could just add, councillor, there's additional ones being scheduled throughout June.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say I used my Dine and Discover at Bellbird on Sunday night, and it was delicious.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, couple more.
Yes, certainly, councillor Chitty.
Obviously, this needs to go out on exhibition, otherwise we may miss the deadlines.
Yes.
There were some fees that have gone up, let's say 50, 60, 70 odd thousand, which relates to planning. Are we going to have justification as to why those fees have gone up as part of the June report?
I'll ask the CEO.
Mr Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, absolutely, we can do that for the further report back after exhibition.
Thank you, if I can. Will that have, let's say, let's call it refunds if those aren't met? So if we say, yes, we're going to charge you 60 odd thousand extra for this proposal, but we're going to deliver this for you in six months, and if we don't, you get your money back?
Mr Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, it's not proposed at this stage to do that. However, that's ultimately a matter for council when it sets its fees and charges.
Thank you. Any other questions, queries, opposition? Yes, no? Right, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the care it carried.
Can I be recorded as voting against, Mayor, please?
Yes, certainly. Councillor Chitty voting against.
Madam Mayor, also myself, I'll be voting against that, please.
You're voting against.
I'd like to be recorded as.
Yep, okay, that's councillor Ayad and councillor Chitty voting against that motion. Otherwise, it's carried. The next item is NOM 01, it's on page 217. It's in the name of councillor Rhodes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I note that the CEO's comment is that a report will be prepared in June. I'm happy for that report to come back. I've spoken to the director concerned, and we're both on the same page, so I look forward to receiving the report and taking the matter up then.
So you're formally withdrawing it?
No, no, Madam Mayor, I'm waiting for the report.
I guess, but you've moved a motion, councillor.
Oh, yes, so, that's right, okay, I'm sorry, yes. So this is, we do need a costing report. The problem that we've got in Liverpool is that.
Thank you, councillor. I just asked you if you were formally withdrawing.
Okay, I'm moving the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're moving it?
Yep.
Okay, we've got a second up? Seconded by councillor Hall. You wish to speak to your motion, councillor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Okay, the reason why we need something like this is that, having just come out of COVID, it's been shown that people were more prone to go out and buy animals during COVID because they were home, they were seeking some sort of companionship, something to make them feel better through very negative times. And the dogs that seem to be most prevalent in our area are the very large ones, that need lots of maintenance, and lots of care, and lots of room, and lots of exercise. And they buy them as little puppies, and of course, little puppies grow up to be big dogs. And this is, if you go out and have a look at the animals in the pound, in the animal welfare shelter, you will find that the majority of the dogs are these large, large animals. And the problem that we've got is that as they grow, the costs include, they aren't fully aware of the costs when an animal is impounded, and how much it costs to then go and get that animal out. And what's happening, when they do find out how much it's going to cost them, they're not going to reclaim their animals because they can't afford it. So what we were hoping to do, Madam Mayor, was to advertise the costs of those fees, so that people are aware of them. That might encourage them to take greater care at keeping their animals enclosed within their own backyards, because they buy the animals during COVID. Some of them may have gone back to work now, and that's causing mental distress with the dogs because they haven't got the people around that they had when they first got them. And that's. and that's when the dogs are escaping. So we need to educate people, madam mayor, we need to educate them onto the the costs of having a large dog, the exercise that they will need, uh, the cost to feed them. And we need to address the issue of people not going to the pound to collect their dogs because they're so scared of the fees, uh, by promoting on Liverpool council's uh website, um, information that shows that lets them know that, well, there are payment options so that we're we're not left with these dogs so that we can actually find these dogs homes more. So that's what it's all about and uh I would hope that the councillors think that that's a good idea because if we can get these dogs rehomed faster or stop them coming there in the first place, that's going to be best for council and for the animals.
Thank you. Uh, any opposition? Anybody wish to speak against the motion? I'll put the motion, those in favour, those against, declare carried.
Can I be recorded as voting against, mayor, please?
Yes, certainly councillor Chitty mu- is wants his name voted against.
Yeah, if I can be recorded voting against it too.
Councillor Blute as well. Okay, still carried so far. Okay, next item is on page two nineteen in the name of councillor Rhodes, yes?
Yes, madam mayor, thank you very much. Um, just looking quickly at the. Hmm? Yes, uh, madam mayor, as we know, uh, and through our workshops once again, uh, council's on the right step with all of this and I did this motion before the wo- the workshop. I was very pleased at that workshop to hear encouraging words about what we need to do and even, uh, as far as, uh, even having to, uh, advise the, um, Department of Planning that the planning regulations that they have are not necessarily working for us here in Liverpool and it isn't certainly delivering more livable communities. So I was very pleased about that. Um, so the motion was to submit um, from Liverpool, a notice of concern that the reason, the the difficulty that we have with some of the the legislations at the moment and in particular, we should be considering, uh, shared living developments and the need. So I'll move that motion, madam mayor.
Thank you. Councillor, if we have a second up? Second for this motion? Thank you councillor Hall. Is there any opposition? Anybody wish to speak against the motion? No, I'll put it, those in favour. No, hands are going up, not even an attempt.
Oh, well.
Is you in favour, it's your motion. Those against? I think somebody should do a division, I hate to hear it.
Yeah.
Yes, full division. Okay, thank you. Those in favour, please stand. Those against, please stand. It's lost, thank you. Next item's on page two two one in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Yep. So it's pretty self-explanatory, um, I guess my, I'm I'm a bit annoyed about this one. So we did the LSPS and we did the LEP and we looked at, um, that section of Warwick Farm and we were told, um, we'll master plan it in due course with, um, whatever the name is at the moment, the New South Wales Housing Corporation, I think. Um, there was a group of private landowners there that said, um, you know, we want to, we want to put in a DA, we want to work on something, um, and they were told to wait until we master planned it. Now, we get, uh, New South Wales Land and Housing Corporation putting up a, um, putting a DA in themselves and I I just don't think that's fair or equitable. Um, but some people might be, might might disagree, but I just, it just annoys me that, uh, we, you know, we're told to 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 create these documents, to develop these documents, that we have a, um, I guess, a a priority or a an intention to master plan an area and then by by one arm of the state government, we tell private developers to hold your horses, we're going to, uh, you know, uh, master plan it, just sit there. Meanwhile, another arm of the state government comes through and goes, we're just going to trash all that and do what we want. Um, so that's the basis of this and, um, unfortunately, I think the only thing we can do here is is write to the minister and tell him we're very unhappy. If anyone's got any other ideas, I'm I'm happy to hear them.
Thank you. Who's need a second up?
I will second, um, madam mayor, but I also have a question.
Yes, what is your question?
Um, is council able to, uh, to kind of hold over this DA until the master planning process comes through?
I'll ask the CEO to ask the right person.
Mr Smith. Thank you councillor, through the CEO, no, we can't. Uh, so in the CEO's comment, it outlines that, uh, anyone can lodge a development application for a permissible land use under the LEP that exists now, which is what's been done in this instance. So council has to assess the application and ultimately determine the application in front of us.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty, you had your line on before?
I'll I'll speak against because if there is an area that's zoned for a permissible use and somebody puts in an application that's permitted in that area, no matter what draft plans, no matter what discussions, no matter what conversations are being had, that person should be entitled to submit a development application like they've done and get it assessed on the planning controls. It's just like saying you currently live in your house, but council is thinking about, or the state government is thinking about some future plan, but you want to do a second story on your home and that should be rejected because somebody down the line somewhere is considering that they may change the zoning in that area. It it just does not make sense at all to tell anyone that you're following all the planning, uh, controls, yet you shouldn't be submitting this DA. That just doesn't make sense at all. And if you're talking about going against your own things, I think this council was presented with a flood study only a couple of months ago and it went against its own advice as well. So it's funny how we can just go after one department where we should just look after ours.
Thank you councillor. Any speakers for the motion besides the mover?
I have a question, madam mayor.
Yes councillor.
Is there current precinct planning being done in the Warwick Farm area, in that area?
I'll ask the CEO.
Mr Smith. Thank you councillor, through the CEO, uh, no, not not yet, it's identified in the local, um, strategic planning statement as a medium term action. Ca- current strategic planning work is focused in the Horse Training Precinct and in Moor Point, uh, and we plan on, um, working with Land and Housing Corp and other landowners within this precinct uh in the next few years. So in the CEO commented outlines, I think from, uh, up to twenty twenty four, if I can, twenty-four, twenty-five financial year.
Thank you.
Then, madam mayor, based on that information, I would have to speak against the motion.
Go ahead then.
Um, basically for the reasons that were just explained to us, that there is no precinct planning at the moment and therefore it would be very, um, well, not appropriate that we don't address DAs that come in. If there was precinct planning being done at the moment, I would understand it, but as that hasn't even been started yet, I think that we've got to treat the DAs as they come in. So I'd have to speak against it.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion before I ask for the right of reply?
So just a clarification, um, I I'm reading the motion that's before us, which is to write to the state minister, asking why the state government has ignored the principles set out in the council mandated strategic planning documents. But what I'm understanding from the comments of other councillors is that they they think the motion is to defer or not deal with this DA?
Uh, if you're asking for an interpretation of what the councillors debated, I don't think I'm best suited for that.
I'm happy to clarify.
Madam mayor, can I just say councillor Hagerty, with all due respect, actually asked the question if it could be held back until the master plan is undertaken. Oh, was it you? Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. The motion is something different councillor. Yes councillor Chitty, you want to?
I'll clarify if councillor Caliander wants. There's currently rules in place that allow certain development. Somebody is submitting an application for that development. Wow, that's something that everybody does. What principles are you going against? If there's an LEP that says you can go to a certain height limit, you can, there's a permissible use for it, you can actually do this development application. So if there's a document that says you can do this, what principles are you going against if you're following the LEP to the letter of the law or while it's being assessed, there could be some changes that need to be done. Um, so why write to them and tell them anything?
Thank you for that clarification. Would you like to write a reply councillor Hagerty?
Yep, um, so probably haven't explained myself well. Um, there was a, well, there was a planning proposal for Freeman and Nicholls Street, Warwick Farm, uh, they were told to wait until this master planning of the area was done, they did that. Uh, meanwhile, this DA's been put in. I get there's a difference between a planning proposal and a DA, but I I I just, I I don't think it's right and I think we should write to the state minister and tell him that, uh, what's the point of forcing councils across Sydney and New South Wales to create these strategic planning documents that, uh, you know, to stop us, you know, to ensure that we do planning that's strategic and has principles and aligns with, uh, whatever they called the regional planning documents and the Sydney planning documents? What's the point of doing all that work if they're effectively going to be ignored by a state agency? That's, that's the gist of my motion.
Thank you very much for that. Um, I'm going to put the motion because debate is closed because of the right of reply. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against? Declare it carried. Next item is on page two two two, under the name of, she turns the page, councillor Hagerty.
It's me again. Hopefully this one makes a bit more sense. Um, we've heard from our good friends at the Moorbank Heritage Group, um, my understanding is that there's been a number of submissions, uh, on behalf of, uh, heritage groups, uh, historical societies and also residents, um, in support of this. Uh, I can, I can read one here, uh, both my grandmother and grandfather served in World War One, um, and had, you know, basically had some involvement around Holsworthy. Um, it it it's an important part of our history, I I guess is is what what I'm saying here, we we need to preserve it. Um, it is, uh, the only railway constructed solely for military purposes during World War One. Um, and, um, yeah, I I acknowledge, I acknowledge the hard work of the the Moorbank Heritage Group and, um, this is a straightforward one, I hope it's not too, um, controversial and I hope we can get behind it and it's a, it's a wonderful bit of local history.
Happy to second it, madam mayor. Thank you councillor Rhodes, seconding. Any other speakers? We'll start with the speaker against. Any other speakers for?
Uh, not necessarily, um, speaking for against, but, uh, just a question as to whether Anzac Creek Bridge could also be included within, um, the motion.
What is it?
Anzac Creek Bridge.
Okay. Is the mover happy with that?
Can we, what about we do a report and bring it to the heritage committee on the feasibility of of listing Anzac Bridge or something? Yep, yep.
Yep, okay.
And just to be specific, you have that bridge on Anzac Road, do we, will we know what, we know what we're talking about?
Yep.
Yep, we're nodding, yep, okay.
It's the military bridge that was used for the.
We name lots of things after, there's, yeah, there's, there's a really big Anzac Bridge in the city, I just don't think we should rock up there and start.
Okay. Are you happy with that councillor?
Yes, happy with that, madam mayor.
And councillor Rhodes, good. Okay, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour. Tea whiz, hands are very slow tonight. And those against, declare carried. I'm now going to close.
Have that as unanimous?
Yes, that was unanimous. The council meeting now will be closed to the public under section ten A two D and ten A two G. And members of the public, if you could please leave. And will be tabled for public notice. The third question was a item that we are yet to receive information on.
So you're noted.
The fourth item related to, um, that we seek waiver advice from the rate solicitors for the appeal class one appeal court case twenty twenty triple O double four oh seven, so the documents can be released and councillors can be further advised to the merits or otherwise for council to consider a class one, class four appeal for the Moorbank Intermodal for the stage three and MPW stage two, the Moorbank Intermodal Development, including those documents that were paid for by rate payers, notwithstanding small portions of the traffic report have been redacted for confidentiality for transport New South Wales. Two, receive a report back as soon as possible following receipt of the waiver advice and three, provide this information to the Moorbank Intermodal Committee members on provision of the waiver being received. That was carried and it was, uh, two people voted against that, councillor Shilton and councillor Waller. Um, with that, the meeting is closed.
Thank you mayor.
Thank you.